Call this meeting of the King William Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call please, Ms. Branch.
Here. 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 Here.
Here. Everyone, please stand and join me in a moment of silence following about a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To republiq the nation stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, review and adoption of the meeting agenda, we have an amended agenda in front of us. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as you please.
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next we come to our public comment period. This is an opportunity, three minutes for an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group, to speak on non-public hearing matters. You ask that you state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin speaking. And if you are, wish to represent a group, ask that you please state so before you begin. We'll open the public comment period now. Anyone online that wishes to speak, use the raise hand button and we'll get you recognized. It's like we got one. And since we've had no one in the room come forward so far, we'll go ahead and get that individual recognized so they can speak.
Hi, yes.
No, that type of comment is not going to be tolerated. I apologize to everyone in the audience, please disconnect them.
Two more.
All right, I see we do have another raised hand there, Mr. Sneed. Do we have him unmuted yet? All right. Mr. Sneed, can you hear me? Well, is there anybody in the room who wishes to make public comment?
Please, somebody.
All right. I apologize, obviously, this is something that's a bit outside of our control, but we do have, you know, we try to make this open and transparent for people to be able to tune in and watch what's going on. Fortunately, some people have decided to make a fool of themselves tonight, and I do apologize that you had to witness that. So, all right, we'll go ahead and move on. We have the consent agenda in front of us, gentlemen, anything that anybody would like to discuss in there, or can we approve that?
Mr. Attorney, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second any discussion. Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi. Presentations, we have Resolution 2169 declaring October 21, 2021, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have our Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Kite, with us this evening. Mr. Kite, floor is yours.
There it is, Matt. Is this presentation?
I think, I think Ben is here.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Matt Kite, I'm the Commonwealth attorney for King William. It's been a while since I've seen you all, but I, in the packet, there's a resolution noting October, even though this is the end of October, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We were unable to be here last month, so thank you for having me this month. I'm going to do a presentation. I've tried to do this every year for you all, just to kind of talk about domestic violence in particular, as it relates to our county. This is kind of a redo of a, of a presentation I did in 2019, seems like a lot longer ago than that, and I've updated a little bit, but I want to just kind of review what a domestic violence prosecution looks like. These are the things that we would cover. The first thing that I would want to talk about, though, the most important thing to understand is that domestic violence has cycles to it. This is, this is a representation of domestic abuse cycle essentially within a household. It's the most straightforward one, there's other ones that go into a little bit more detail, but this is the most straightforward one, and this is the one that we tend to encounter in our office a fair amount. Usually, we're in the part either between two and three, or even three and four, where we're prosecuting a case after an incident. And these cycles continue until they're broken, for whatever reason, either the folks stop doing what they're doing, or some of those jail, which also stops them from doing what they're doing, or they, they, they just, they get educated, there's a variety of ways it stops. But there are also generational cycles of domestic violence, and as it states up there, children that are exposed to domestic violence experience symptoms associated with PTSD, have difficulty learning, and are much more likely to commit violent crimes against somebody else. They're in fact three times more likely to repeat that, the cycles. And growing up in a home with a domestic violence is the most significant predictor of whether or not someone will engage domestic violence later in life. I can tell you, I've been practicing criminal law, either as a defense attorney or prosecutor, going on 19 years, and I've reached a stage in my career where I'm starting to see the children of people that I represented or prosecuted come back through the courtroom, either perpetrators or victims of domestic violence. So the generational cycle is something that's very concerning long-term for us, but we, in our office, work very hard to try to break these. The first prosecutions start off when a domestic violence crime occurs. Those are all acts of various forms of domestic violence, family abuse, sexual abuse, dating violence, elder abuse. Those are the things, elder abuse and capacitated adult abuse, and things that aren't necessarily highlighted often, but they do, they are domestic violence and they do occur. So what happens when, with, with crimes that occur? Domestic violence, one in four men, women, one in seven men experience some form of domestic violence at some point in their lifetime. That comes out to about 24 people per minute, 12 million Americans a year. In Virginia, in 2020, there were 68,000 calls to domestic violence, sexual violence hotlines in the Commonwealth. And in King William County, for 2020, we handled 75 cases that are open and closed. In other words, we either opened one or closed them in 2020. Those are only cases involving violence against women under our B-Stop grant. So there were other cases, there were cases that involved children, there were cases that involved men, but what we track for our grant is the cases that involve women. And 75 cases, or 18% of our caseload in 2020, was violence against women, domestic violence. Nationwide, it says there, about 56% of non-fatal domestic violence victimizations are reported. 56 seems a little high to me, quite frankly. Virginia, 71% of people sought, who went through advocacy services, also reported their assault to law enforcement. Again, that seems very high because, as we pointed out earlier, cycles of violence, both generational, within a household, this goes on and on and on and on. Victims, quote unquote, leave their abusers an average of six to eight times if we're finally ending a relationship. So somewhere in that six to eight times, it finally gets reported to law enforcement with many, many people. It's often a discussion that we have with people. I'm not quite sure if anybody can see at the top there with that, but, so it's a discussion that we have about why people, reasons domestic violence don't, victims don't leave. One of the reasons that we often see, and I've lost my clicker. Real fear, fear of more violence. We have many discussions with people. If I call the police, if I get, if I prosecute, it'll be worse next time. People are isolated. Many, many times, people have reported to us, particularly that second statement, it can't be that bad, you just need to work on your marriage or your relationship. Children, people are afraid of losing their kids. Financial, lots of income, home, you can't survive without my income, the house and car in my name. And emotions. People, these are, remember, domestic violence situations are almost always situations between people who love each other. And emotions are very strong, both directions, both dislike and love for each other. And a lot of, especially the first four there, relate to power and control, which is a major factor in domestic violence, power and control of one person over another. So after a crime is reported, law enforcement goes and talks with the victim, and witnesses might be present, and if they're able to be alleged abuser, evidence is collected, law enforcement, sheriff's office, the town police, even state police, if they're called out, take photographs, collect any physical evidence. And on the scene, most of the time, they're trying to determine, the law enforcement officers are trying to determine who the predominant physical aggressor is. Sometimes it's very obvious, sometimes it's not, and we in King William County are very, very lucky to have a lot of trained, well-trained law enforcement officers who are very good at figuring out that predominant physical aggressor, because that's really important. You don't want to have law enforcement arresting the victim because the victim fought back with their abuser. And another thing that we try to do is assess any danger, ongoing dangers to victims and children in the household. So a lot of people raising their hands on there. Not quite sure why these folks are on there. Jackasses.
Thank you.
So during the, during, during the investigation, what we work with law enforcement to do is make it a victimless prosecution. We want to provide as much background evidence for our cases not associated with the victim having testified, so that we don't have a victim that is out there just by themselves, just by him or herself testifying with her word against his or his word against hers. We look for as much corroborating evidence as we possibly can. We've done very few true victimless prosecutions, but we have done them, and they, when they, when we are able to do them, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's a good outcome in cases. After someone is arrested. All right.
Like I said, let's adapt the next slide approach.
And after someone is arrested, after someone is arrested, the defendant is taken before magistrate and a warrant is issued. Arrest, the arresting agency will take the defendant before magistrate and issue a warrant. A warrant can also be issued by a magistrate on a citizen complaint alone. We tend to prefer a law enforcement investigation. The defendant is given a bond or is reviewed by a magistrate, there's a lot of factors that go into that, some of those have changed recently. And an emergency protective order is automatically issued, it's good for 72 hours or until the next court date. And the victim can also petition for additional protective orders. Our victim witness program, this audit program, is really good about getting out there and helping people figure out how to navigate that protective order gauntlet. Go ahead. So the defendant is then brought before court, before the court, the next time the court meets, usually the juvenile domestic relations court, they're formally informed of the charge, told to pay your charges, or a family member, they're asked, they're told that they have a right to counsel, and they can either, if they qualify, get a court-appointed attorney, or they can hire their own attorney. Some people choose to defend themselves, which, you know, happens sometimes, but we prefer folks to have an attorney of some sort, case is separate trial. The one thing that our office tries very hard to do, though, is address bond conditions. We review every arraignment before court to make sure that if no contact between the victim and the defendant is warranted, that we try to get the court to amend their bond conditions to allow that, and that's independent of whether or not there's a protective order. Go ahead, click that. The other thing that we do at the very beginning of a case is get in contact with the victim and any other witnesses that we can find as early as possible. Go ahead. And we find that that's the key, that's a fundamental key to achieving effective prosecution. So we, we work to ensure that people are safe, assist them as they figure out the process, help them meet, we work with, I think it's Thrive Virginia now, used to be Project Hope, if they need housing, and learning the facts of the case as early as possible is very important. It keeps, essentially what it does is it keeps victims on board, so that when we come back around, that back end of the cycle, where there is promises of it not happening again, we're in a good position to have an effective prosecution. Go ahead, next one. All right, next step is review for trial. We have your witnesses, review the facts of the case, review the law, and we set a goal for every case. What are we trying to accomplish here? Are we, are we trying to, we're always trying to hold someone accountable in some form. Accountability could be going to jail, could be going to a program, it could be just obtaining a conviction, so that somebody is aware in the future, if this happens again, that they've already had their one bite of the apple. Every case, we have a goal there. And plea agreements, offers of pleading guilty are only made if it furthers the achievement of that goal. It's not, we're lucky in this jurisdiction that we're able to make plea offers, plea agreement offers, to try to achieve a goal, as opposed to, I don't know, lightning the docket, or whatever the media says that plea agreements are for. In reality, that's, that's how we use it. Go ahead, do the next one. Essentially, we either go to trial, where there's proof beyond a reasonable doubt, the court makes a decision as to guilt or innocence, or if the person pleads guilty, either based upon an agreement or on their own, those are the two outcomes possible if we go to trial. Go ahead. If we go to trial and the defendant is found not guilty beyond a reasonable doubt, we just move on to the next case. If we go to trial and the court finds there's evidence sufficient to find someone guilty, that can lead to a first offender, the first offender statute for assault and battery of a family member only, and sometimes the court will allow that, sometimes we'll be in agreement with that, even if we go to trial. And then the final outcome, if possible, is for someone to plead guilty and either to buck the plea or to the charge done. If they plead guilty, as presented, there's no agreement, the defendant can't appeal to the circuit court. Go ahead, the next one. So I talked a little bit about first offender, it is a one-time shot the apple, one-time bite of the apple, don't want to mix my metaphors there, but one-time bite of the apple. It's a two-years of probation, they have to complete an anger management class, which we, we actually prefer something called batterer's intervention course, which is more intensive, they've got to be a piece of good behavior, and if they're successful and they do those things, and there may be other conditions such as, you know, no assault or behavior towards your family members, or no contact with your family members, that depends on what the case is. If they're successful, the case is dismissed and it can come off their record, it cannot be expunged at this point in Commonwealth, but it can come off their record, so employers can't see it, or for many people, more importantly, the federal government can't suspend their Second Amendment rights. But if it's not successful, we bring the case back to court, and depending on why it's not successful, the person can be found guilty and they can have a sentence imposed. If they go through the first offender program, it's only on the first domestic assault or assault and battery family member, that's a class one misdemeanor punishable, up to 12 months in jail and/or $2,500 fine. This is just a slide referring to appeals, and if anybody has a right to appeal from a DNR court, which is a lower court, to the circuit court for de novo trial, we go through de novo, meaning brand-new trial, we can try the case all over again in the circuit court, they have a right to a jury there. If they are found guilty in the circuit court, they have a right to appeal. Now they have a statutory right to appeal to the court of appeals, and then to the Supreme Court. Go ahead. So after court, a protective order may be entered, a long-term, a two-year, up to two-year protective order may be entered, and in some cases, it must be entered, cases of, involved in stalking, for example, it must be entered. Victims and their families can receive counseling if they want. Again, Thrive Virginia is very good at hooking people up with that, as is our victim witness program. And depending on the disposition, victims begin to rebuild their lives, and we all hope that, at least in that household, we've broken a cycle of domestic violence. Any questions?
Well, yes, sir, counsel.
Yes.
In the last two years, have you seen any trends, either positive or negative, in this particular world?
So, looking at our numbers, I was actually a little surprised, 2020 was, we had more cases in 2020 of just, again, the B-Stop, the Violence Against Women Act cases, which we specifically track, we were up much higher than I, than I anticipated we would be there, given all the, I'm sure everybody remembers 2020. So we see a lot of strangulation, strangulation is a class six felony, it's probably the most short of a malicious wounding or a homicide, it's probably the most dangerous domestic violence we see. People that use, that strangle others are much more likely to commit a murder, to murder their significant other. They're statistically, I don't know how this correlates, but statistically, they're also more likely to try to go along with the law. It's, it's, it's a very dangerous thing. So we've, we've seen a lot of that, I believe that that has a lot more to do with the great training that our law enforcement officers have received, they know to look for it, they have a checklist, all of the agencies we work with work off of a checklist to investigate that, and we have a fantastic relationship with the Bonds, Accords, Forensic Nursing Program, who collect medical evidence in those. And the cases that we've been able to hold together through the whole process have gone very well in those strangulation cases. So strangulation is probably something we're seeing more, but I really believe, it didn't just appear, I really believe it's a result of better investigation, so.
A citizen complaint for a warrant, how often do you find that they are bogus?
Oh.
False, you know, without any supporting evidence.
Well, so it, in my view, it goes in cycles. I've been here 10 years, and before that, I was a defense attorney and I saw it. It depends on the quality of the magistrates. Right now, we've got a very good chief magistrate who's training her folks well, and they can suss out kind of the silliness sometimes. We, and citizen complaints can be for domestic violence, or destruction of property, or trespassing, or any class one misdemeanor. It's an important part, it's, it's important in Virginia's traditional system of criminal justice, but it is certainly ripe for abuse, and, you know, I'm hesitant to put a number on it, we're fortunately, because we review every case before arraignment, we tend to try to get out in front of problem cases like that. We know many times what's going on, either a deputy will call one of us and say, you know, myself or my deputy will call and say, hey, you know, I was out there, this is what I really saw, I know he or she went to the magistrate or something else, but that's not what happened. So we, we can get out in front of that, we regularly dismiss those charges at arraignment, if it's focused. Sometimes, sometimes it's not, and sometimes it leads to something more, so.
There's a way to do that, actually.
Well, thank you, I, she's.
She, as the defense attorney said today, was on a bond hearing, she put on the whole anti-bond hearing without taking a breath. Even the defense attorney mentioned that, and she was denied the bond.
Well, my, my deputy Commonwealth attorney, Tiffany Webb, is fantastic. I've missed some time in the office recently, and she picked it up and ran with it, and we couldn't be in better hands there, so I'm very, we're very lucky to have her, and I have to fend off other jurisdictions from trying to steal her away, so. Any other questions? Steven, anything?
All right. No, we always appreciate this presentation and everything that your office does, you know, to protect vulnerable people in the community. I think I ask this every year, though, but a couple of, if you could just mention a couple of organizations that are good resources for people who might find themselves in this situation and want to know where they can turn to.
Sure, so Thrive Virginia is one of them, they, they have a website, I don't have their number here, but they have a, they have a link to a hotline, there is a statewide sexual violence, domestic violence hotline as well, and, boy, if I knew the number for that, I would tell you, or if I could Google it off the top of my head, but you can Google that for Virginia. Those are initial things, but really what, what I would tell people that are involved, or if they know of, you know, if they're a neighbor, a family member, is contact law enforcement. Contrary to much of the narratives recently, law enforcement prosecutors, we're not looking to just lock people up and throw away the key, we are looking to solve problems, that's what we're in the business of, all of us, and domestic violence, in particular, is a, a significant problem, whether we acknowledge it or not, and, you know, we tell victims all the time, we know that you still love him, we know that he's the father of your children, and a good father, except for when he's attacking you in front of the children, we know these things. We're not looking to send him, you know, to prison necessarily, unless what he's done is very serious, we're looking to do two things, we're looking to keep you alive, and we're looking to break whatever cycle is going on in your house, so that you can continue in, and be contributing to your, our community, and more importantly, from our perspective, so that your kids don't come back through our system, you know, starting when they're 15, 16 years old, and just go on. And that, that's, those are our goals overarching when we're dealing with these, there are those people that need to go away and have a timeout, and we're more than happy to accommodate them, but in the big picture... But in the big picture, we're not looking, we're looking to help people solve problems, so.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait. We have a resolution?
I was going to ask you, are we taking a motion there for Resolution 2169?
Happily.
Declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Very good. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Ringel?
Aye.
Mr. Harbinger?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Resolution 21-75 declaring November 2021 as Adoption Awareness Month. We have Ms. Little with us from Social Services tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, students. I'm not going to keep you long. I have already provided you all with a proclamation. I just want to give you all a few facts about adoption in Virginia. I'm here tonight to see if we can get a resolution to have November made as Adoption Awareness Month in King William County. All children have the right to be safe, stable, and live in nurturing environments. Too often, this is not the case for some children. I want to speak with you all tonight about adoption awareness, but I would be remiss if I didn't talk about foster care. In the state of Virginia, there are over 5,500 children in foster care. Fifty-three percent of those children are boys, and 47% of girls. Fostered children are not limited to one class of people. We have 60% of children in the Virginia foster care system that are Caucasian, 29% of them are African-American, and 11% of them are Hispanic. And the average stays in foster care for about 21 months. When family reunification is the goal, foster care is a temporary, short-term placement until the child's safety and well-being can be secured. With adoption, children are granted a permanent home, a forever home, and adoptive parents have the legal right and responsibility in raising the child until they turn 18 years of age, as they would if they were their own biological children. Some families are eligible to receive adoption assistance for the child to help meet that child's needs. And there are over 1,700 foster children waiting for adoption in the state of Virginia. Thirty-five percent of those children are under the age of five. Thirty percent of those children are over the age of 13. So what I'm asking you to do is accept November, because November is a big month in this nation. Not only do we celebrate our veterans on November 11th, and we celebrate Thanksgiving to be with our families and our loved ones, but we also need to remember that November is Adoption Awareness Month. And November 23rd is National Adoption Day. So I'm asking you all to respectively adopt a resolution, make it November Adoption Awareness Month in the county of King William, because children deserve a forever home.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Where are most of these children that are waiting? Where are they housed?
Typically, they're in foster homes or residential facilities. For our county, we have three children in foster care right now, and out of the three children we have in foster care, one of those, one child is actually slated for adoption. She's currently living in a therapeutic group home.
Great. Any other questions?
Just great job.
Thank you.
You know, I'm biased.
But then I would trust that you'd be ready to make a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2175.
Good. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Ringel?
Aye.
Mr. Harbinger?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You, too. Next up, we have VDOT Transportation Briefing, Mr. McKnight, our Saluda Residency Administrator.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lee McKnight. I'm the new residency administrator for Saluda Residency, taking over for Joyce McGowan, so.
I wasn't going to call you the new Joyce.
Yeah, yeah, I've got big shoes to fill, I know, so. But happy to be here, just wanted to introduce myself and give a really brief update in terms of VDOT. A rural rustic 637 White Oak Landing, that project is complete. 608 Hazelwood, that is complete, pending some traffic engineering items. They have to review the speed limit and that sort of thing and signage, but the road is done. Sharon Road, the park and ride, that is complete as well. There are some pending signs and lighting that they're going to be finishing up here, but the project is complete there for the most part and will be open to traffic. In terms of maintenance, primary mowing is complete. Secondary is ongoing. There's a couple issues that they ran into with the tractors, but it is mostly complete. Unpaved road maintenance throughout the county was completed this month. Upcoming maintenance, just wanted to highlight a couple things. The crews will be daylighting signs, pothole repairs countywide. There's asphalt repair on 605, I believe that's Manfield Road, brush cutting behind guardrails, and some ditching on Route 641 Sandy Point. And I will be happy to take any questions if you have it.
You won't be when we're done.
That's okay.
First thing...
They moved 360, so he may be in good shape right now.
I want to thank you for addressing the issues on infield road. It was dead trees, old hanging trees that were going to come down. Secondly, the board had discussed maybe physically stepping up to the plate, the county stepping up to the plate to doing the mowing on the 360 corridor, maybe once a year or more or whatever. But is any of that funding that's earmarked for, say, Route 360, does it, could that be reimbursed to the county so we could hire a contractor? Or is that solely at the discretion of the VDOT?
Well, I guess it depends. So you're saying just doing one cycle through the county?
We would like to have as many cycles as we could, and I think we only, we get a few. I understand also that a growth retardant is sprayed, is that just once a year?
Yes, sir. So typically, PGR plant growth regulator, we typically spray that in the spring, and that helps kind of, it targets the broadleaf grasses, the things that grow really, really tall. So it helps keep it down to a manageable level, and typically, we spray that in the spring, and that delays that first mow to around July is around the time. This year, I will admit that we probably waited a little too long for the last, the final mow. That's something that I'm going to be reviewing with my maintenance operations manager to see if that mow can be adjusted. What I don't want to have happen, obviously, is do it too early, and then you end up going into the winter with less than desirable conditions. But we're definitely going to take a look at that. In terms of, I think I got a question about that from someone from the county about whether or not we could plug funds. Yeah, and that's doable. There's some things that go along with that, but we can look into that, absolutely.
One of the things I think was addressed in the exchange between you and Mr. Hudgens was that, that's, 360 is our main economic corridor, and when it comes to folks transiting the county, maybe just driving through 90% of the time, but it's what they see, it's what they leave with. And for the last two years, I've noticed that Hanover County, the broadest flats area on the other side of the Pumonkey is mowed, King William is three feet tall. If we could synchronize those a little better, and especially at the height of the tourist season, I would say would be my goal.
Sure. And actually, I come from Chesterfield residency, so I know the Ashland guys, or actually, I texted them about when they were mowing, and we're going to try to do a better job of syncing those cycles up.
Is Hanover County doing it more often?
No, no. The same cycles, it's the same number of cycles. I don't know if they do PGR, to be honest, but they do three cycles. In Chesterfield, we did PGR with two additional cycles.
You don't know whether they may be picking up some of the cost to do the 360 corridor?
Well, it depends on the locality and the location. Some localities, businesses may pick up some of that stretch, and then some localities actually allocate funding for additional mowing in certain locations. That is doable. In Chesterfield, they do that. I know in York County, they do that. So that's doable. I don't know if they do it in Hanover, but I can certainly look into that.
I've got to add, what is, what is a retardant doing to our water system?
Well, I don't think it's doing anything to the, it's completely, I can give you the ingredients, the exact ingredients from our roadside manager. I don't want to speak out of turn, I don't know exactly what's in it, but I know it's safe for that sort of stuff.
It doesn't kill the retardant?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't kill the grass. Like, that's the important thing. It's basically keeping it in check and slowing the growth of the grass. It's a plant growth regulator is the actual, the R in that.
And in West Point, the pavers are still, you knew I was going to add.
Yes, sir, I did.
Spring summer?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to make it that long before we have big homes?
Yeah, I've kind of dove into that one a little bit headfirst. Unfortunately, we're getting out of paving season, and that work, as you're well aware, is going to be, it's going to have to be at night, because that intersection is very, very complicated. It's a big intersection, it's busy. I've already been in contact with the mill, and I'm going to try to coincide there.
Not during the layout.
I'm sorry?
Not during the layout.
I'm going to try to coincide with their outage, so that we...
That's what I meant.
Okay. Don't do it. How we would be wise not to do it during there.
Yeah. Three times as many people working there.
Yeah, okay.
That's a fair amount.
That's good to know. That's good to know. But it will be in the spring. We have some experience with the solution. We did it in Urbana, the town of Urbana with good results. It's a stamped asphalt, and it will ultimately last longer. Those pavers are just not lasting, and ultimately, we looked at repairing each individual paver, but there's no way of doing that without having to rip all the rest of the pavers up. And I'm afraid if we start ripping one up, it's just, the rest are just going to come out.
It's a lot of traffic here, traffic control.
Yes, sir. It's a complicated intersection. It's going to absolutely have to be at night, it's going to have to be staged, the traffic control is going to be intricate, to say the least, so.
It'll be like where we had the old bridges.
Please, no. I got to cross that. So speaking of, well, I'll let you go first. I deserve my time.
That's allowed.
My one perk, my new chair.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring up, and I hate to say it, but I do work for VDOT, and they're, like I said, I've made complaints, and I hate to say this again, but we get the emails, we send the emails, I tell my constituents to call 800 Highway Helpline, we make the complaints, they send us an email saying they're going to be fixed. There were 50 potholes on our road. They came out and fixed five. They left the 45 other ones. The trees are overhanging the roads. Of course, it's not a major road like 30 or 360, but if we make a complaint, I was telling the constituents, like I said, VDOT's just like our department, it's complaint-based, so I hate to give out Highway Helpline, but that's what that's for. Why, when they come out, do they only do a small amount of a portion of the work and then leave the rest and not touch any of the cutting, and then they send you an email saying it's done? And then the second thing was, since the intersection of Allet 360, they've been telling us for two years, they're starting that project, and there's still nothing been done.
So potholes first. Which road is that?
It's Allet's Road, and I don't know the number. That's another thing, when people do call, I hate to say this again, but Highway Helpline is not very helpful. You got to know, now they've changed everything to street signs, but Highway Helpline doesn't want street names, they want route numbers, they don't want an exact address. On that address, there are no houses. So I try to give them the intersection where the beginning of the road is, they don't like that. But anyway, that's Allet's Road plural, is the road.
Okay, I will look into that one. They should, and that's something that I'd like to focus on. I've already, you know, we've already started some stuff.
And stuff's been transferred.
Right. Well, I mean, maintenance-wise, you know, getting back to more of our preventative maintenance as opposed to reactionary, as much as we possibly can, I'm not going to say we're going to be, you know, changing everything day one, but I do believe in preventative maintenance and in working, planning your work and working your plan is kind of the buzzword that I use a lot. And that's something that we are going to try to do a better job of. If there are, if they're going to a road, and this is something that I will address, I'll go take a look at it myself, and there are potholes there, regardless of whether or not there were work orders called in for all of them, I don't, they need to fix all the potholes. So we will, I will address that. The tree trimming, I'll have to look at Allet's, there is a, and without getting into the details and the minutia, but there is, we do have a plan, a tree trimming plan. If there's some spot locations that are a safety hazard or something like that, we'll absolutely take care of that on the spot, and we should take care of that. If it's more of a, you know, trimming the road for an extended stretch, that is on a plan that is done through a contractor, and I can find out if Allet's Road is on that, where it is on that plan.
It's not on it, because like I said, they've never come out there. I said the trees have gotten so bad that our two-lane road is now a one-lane road because the trees are so far off, but it doesn't matter, like I said, because it's rural, so we all just move over to the other side. But like you said, if it was two-way, nobody would ever be able to go. And about the cleanup, I would go for the thing about the county, maybe businesses stepping up and being able to put extra money. I don't want to take money away from y'all's budget, because we need extra cutting, we don't need less cutting, but if we can get people to volunteer, I know we can't do it ourselves, because I told them that note, because I've asked before, they can't cut it themselves, but if we could hire the same people, pay them, the legal way to do it, extra ones would be great.
And we'll look into that. I think that's doable, and like I said, we will definitely be looking at adjusting those timings, and I think that'll help. Again, if there's additional mowings, we can look into that.
And like you said, the growth retardant, I don't think, I think the growth retardant issue was accidentally put as a growth expectorant, because it's Johnson grass, we've had complaints about it, it's like six feet tall, the kudzu's taken over it. I'm just joking, but still, it seems that way, because it's been real wet.
Well, the Johnson grass, if there are any spot locations, we do spray that separately, and that is a completely different. But yeah, if you have any specific locations, that is something that we would like to know about, if that spray appears on it.
And then the intersection and improvement holes.
Yes, and was that, is that Route 600, do you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, that is, and plans start in 2022, spring of 2022. So that is on track for that turn lane at Route 360.
Thank you. And I want to applaud you all for doing the 360-30 intersection. That is so much better now, I've had so many people, constituents, saying how well that is. I mean, it was already there, but just re-striping it, repaving it, putting those extra turn lanes right and left and straight, and the lights and the cross-through, that's, it's really nice now.
Good.
Thank you.
You know what, I've just got a couple of minor things on.
That's all right.
All right. Anything else? All right. We appreciate you coming out, and we will certainly, certainly be in touch.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, we're on to Old Business, Resolution 21-76, adjustments to the overtime and compensatory time policy and updates to the county observed holiday schedule. Ms. McEntire is with us this evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening.
Tonight, I bring for your approval Resolution 2176. This is the resolution for the changes we discussed at the work session on October 4th. The annual hour space for all employees will be calculated at 2,080. This revision will change the hourly rate used to compute leave payout as well as the overtime rate. The base for overtime and compensatory time will be changed from 35 hours per week to 40 hours per week. The normal hours of work for employees will not change. I've also included a revision to update the county-recognized holidays to be in line with the state of Virginia holidays. Leave Jackson Day, which was celebrated in January, was removed. Juneteenth, celebrated on June 19th, and Election Day, which occurs the Tuesday after the first Monday of November, have been added in to coin side of the table.
Great. Any questions? If there are no questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Resolution 21-76 is made.
Thank you.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Harbinger?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up, upcoming public hearing for public, or rather, for proposed central garage water storage tank location. Ms. Graham, our Director of Planning and Supplies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had a, the planning commission had a meeting on October fifth, uh, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the Manquinn site for the proposed water tower location. Um, it will be coming up on, uh, November eighth, um, for you to have a public hearing, um, for this, and discussion of possible approval of the Manquinn water tower site.
Okay.
Uh, it's being advertised just for, for consideration of the proposed elevation water tower site. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Right. So we're doing the hearing on the eighth or are we? Okay. Yes.
The eighth.
That's clear. All right, um, we've obviously, we discussed otherwise the issue already. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Uh, could, could you please get us a little more granularity on the actual location? The, even a lot long, we can look up Google Earth ourselves, but anything you can do to help better understand exactly where it's gonna be. It's, from what I've seen so far, I have a general idea, but.
So we can email you some mapping and then have mapping available, um, on the eighth? Will that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
The preliminary.
Right, unless, if we can get that mapping in the agenda packet as well.
We can.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Sure.
And on the planning commission too, and I know that we brought this up, but, uh, we didn't mention anything about, but we had talked about this board with Mr. Hubbard brought up about saying he reached out to the original Kelly Lane site, which is what Ms. Graham and Mr. Huggins were saying was better. And I didn't know, was that just scrapped or, we didn't really talk about it and I didn't wanna bring it up, but I was wondering.
And I've briefly talked with some members of the tribe and their plans are not as assured as what was their, the plan before for putting housing back there, what kind of density they're looking for. Um, so it's a lot less stable to say, well, we're having this number, so.
Right.
That's how we're there. It's gonna work.
I, I had a tribal council member reach out to me the day after that meeting to say that they were surprised that that had come up because they, it's, they, they had said that that, they were pretty settled on it. They do something, they're doing their own system.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clear up. Nobody had heard that way.
Right. And so, yeah, I, I think again, the general consensus of the board was, A, that was, um, an undesirable location from an aesthetic standpoint, a- as well as I think you personally who've gotten some negative feedback on that being the location and also the potential for this location in Manquinn. A, to be less impactful on, on the view shed of, uh, you know, a great number of residents, but then also to have some, uh, potential positive impact for economic development in that corridor or three sixty.
Where we have some opportunity.
Exactly.
This would actually allow for water to be extended so much further down where we don't have it now.
Right.
And it can loop around through the Commerce Park and in that area. So.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I guess the only, Mr. Mr. Moore's comment being well taken that let's, let's see if we can put it on a map, um, and have that in the agenda packet so that, you know, the public can review that as well, uh, ahead of the hearing. That would be the only, the only comment I would echo. Otherwise, uh, yeah, we'll proceed and we'll be ready for that public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-seven, establishing a reassessment advisory committee. Mr. Huggins.
Our August twenty-third board supervisors meeting, um, we discussed the possible, uh, board of assessors or a re-advisory committee and gone back and a little further scoping on that. Um, I think the last time we spoke, uh, we were pushing more towards a re-advice, uh, reassessment advisory committee. Um, the difference being that the board of assessors doesn't actually do legwork. They are just another body that would have final say over, um, the actual values of land. Whereas the reassessment advisory committee could actually be a workforce that is doing things and validation, bringing expert, uh, material expertise to the reassessment, aiding staff, being communications liaisons.
Right.
Et cetera. Um, so that is what has been scoped out in your agenda packets. And, um, I've provided a resolution to consider, but there's also a couple of points that I don't think we discussed further that, uh, we could amend the resolution with if there is consensus. Um, and that would be the number of members.
Right.
As well as the length of term.
Okay. Um, I've already gotten some feedback on number of members and at least one member on the board and if, uh, they wanna.
Who's sitting right here?
Right. So I was gonna, if you wanna, if you wanna identify yourself.
Anytime, anytime. You know, I'll, I'll tell it like I, I feel about it. I think it should be one from every district. Uh, in saying that, I think Mr. Hubbard would be a good lead now. I think that would take up this election from the fifth. Uh, I, I think it should be spread out just like the other, other thing. I do not think there should be a board supervisor on there.
Okay.
That's me.
Right.
I'd like to echo what Bill said. I actually spoke to, uh, Fred Pearson and Steve Womper. And I've given this a whole lot of thought over the last week and a half. Both of them advised that it not be a member from the board of supervisors on these committees, that we need to maybe, if, we're trying to make this work after the fiasco from the last time. And I think it would give, uh, certain groups a point of audit if, if we have that direct involvement. Uh, and I have always been an advocate for equal representation from each district. You know, in this case, it might not be possible to find someone qualified, but, uh, I think that we should make that attempt.
Okay.
I echo the same thing about one from every district. I was on the fence about having the supervisor. I think it would now be a conflict of interest if we're on there because if we have a good advisory committee, they would bring it to us anyway. So then we would hear about it before. But we do, do have our legal counsel here, so could we ask him what he thought about having the actual supervisor on the advisory committee?
I think I know what it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of the idea.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, I think that the way the law is set up, it's a, uh, the assessment process and the taxation process are two different processes. And so by having a supervisor on the advisor committee, you kind of muck it up. And you make a good point that an advisor committee is simply advising the board anyway. So I, I certainly prefer with, uh, those that have spoken against the idea.
Okay. Mr. Moore, any, any input on that?
Well, I'd ask the rest of the board members, are we gonna kind of stick with the committee's skills and knowledge that's recommended here? Or we're just gonna do a free-for-all warm body? Who's next?
No, I would certainly think that we would be, uh, recruiting people that have the, uh, skills and abilities that we, uh, would find desirous. Oh, remember.
We'll shoot for when next.
Well, um, I would say that what I would like to see us accomplish tonight is go ahead and, and just try to a- agree, A, to, you know, e- essentially the, the scope as Mr. Huggins has outlined it here, what we intend this committee to do. Um, so that as we recruit people, we have a clear description of, of what the job's gonna be. And then also to, um, you know, the method of ampaning that we, that we want to select. Uh, you know, the resolution here is, is pretty broad. It merely just, or, you know, where Dan's the group is created. Um, but the, the actual, uh, meat is gonna be in the, the policy here, as you would see it in this kind of scope of, of the committee's duties and responsibilities that Mr. Huggins has outlined for, uh, which, which case I, I, I find no issue with, with that. Anything that, you know, we've, we've discussed what we want this committee to do and I think it's been well covered in this document. You know, the only, the only contention that I was getting is feedback was, again, that, that the makeup being, uh, both expanded and contracted and so that we would, again, A, have representation from each district, but then also remove, uh, the board supervisors, uh, seat. So, with that being said, I think we have general consensus on the idea that we, you know, we want this to be five members, one from each district. We agree on.
No board member.
No board member. We agree on the skills that we would expect our respective candidates to bring. Okay? Um, and then again, as far as the scope for what we wanted to do, uh, which is essentially to engage the assessor, the commissioner, and all involved departments. Uh, you know, facilitate communication, facilitate citizen engagement was a big thing that we wanted them to do. Um, you know, actually being, I don't know, almost a, not necessarily public relations firm, but be the, the, the group that's kind of communicating this process, uh, to the citizens and to us and through us as the process goes on. Um, so that, that aligns up with what we've already discussed, I think. So.
Is, is this a paid committee?
Not that I see in either the policy document or in the resolution. Uh, no.
I just.
In fact, I don't think we have any paid committees at this point other than, this planning commission still gets a stipend, I think. Yeah, because that's, that's it. Every other committee is all volunteer. Well, in the BOE, get some compensation when they're impaneled as well with that set out by state.
Yeah, that's cool. Right. And that would be another discussion point. Do we want this committee to cease before the board of equalization begins? Or has the board of equalization begins?
Right.
Or would they continue functioning? They wouldn't, I don't think it would be a good idea for them to function anymore.
I don't think it would be a good idea for them to function in concert with one another. I think the duties at that point in time are pretty well defined when we enter that part of the process. Um, I think maybe a bigger question is, is membership in this committee a disqualifier for being on the BOE?
It was my understanding that, uh, you couldn't serve on both. Is that right? Uh, well, since this is just a big committee, right, if it's not the board of assessors, they probably can't, right?
Well, the statute says you can't serve on the B, uh, you know, the, the BOE and another board. But the fact is, if this thing is going to terminate before the BOE actually exists, then there's certainly no reason why.
Right, right. I, I had a feeling that was the answer, but that being the answer, then it, it is a question of our policy. Um, as the board, do, do we want those groups to be distinct from one another? I mean, there's advantages to having, you know, somebody with knowledge of the process coming in. Uh, there's also probably a benefit to having the BOE be completely independent from the process as they come in and get educated on what's been going on. I can see it. I can see it both ways for sure. Um, I would think for, for, for my end, whoever I nominate to be on this committee, I would probably expect I would not nominate to be on the BOE.
I agree with that. I think they, they need to be separate. It's gonna be public outcry any way you look at it. The cleaner we can make it, I think it's, that's gonna be the way to go.
Over here, really, we, we need to modify line sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and the rest is. It's good.
Yep. So we would.
There's no date on there? Uh, make it by citizens of the county.
And we'll just delete of each district.
Yeah, right.
Let me ask, in the event that we do not receive enough applications from each district, are we gonna go ahead and fill this or just put it on hold? What's the consensus?
I don't agree with some of the others that they can't be on the same board because I would think that that would be good knowledge of them if they had part of the knowledge of what was going on to do that. To have some of them, like I said, if they're asked to be on these advisory committees.
Oh, right.
Excuse me, were on that before, but they have to be independent anyway.
If I can articulate my, my reasoning for that though, is that, you know, that the BOE is being asked to impartially hear, um, you know, citizens' appeals. And I think that, and I'm not, again, it, it wouldn't be a question of the integrity of the individual on this board because I, I would nominate somebody with impeccable integrity. The, the question would, would be, I think, for a citizen, uh, coming into this process, would see somebody who has been working with the commissioner and with the assessor throughout the process now being asked to make a ruling. You know, I don't think that I would come into that process thinking that I would get a very fair hearing with somebody who has been working closely with the person who's ruled, who's decision I'm appealing.
That makes sense. Since we have a committee, there wouldn't be any issues, but you know, we'll get, but I agree with it.
Right. Again, it's, it's about, it's about, A, it's about, well, the, the whole point of this committee is to establish the most transparent process possible. The purpose of the BOE is to establish, again, a committee that can impartially hear appeals from citizens. And I just feel like regardless of whether or not it would be a fact, it would still be a perception that it would not give you a, a fair and impartial hearing if you had somebody who, you know, ushered the process through to that point, being asked to make a ruling on your appeal.
I agree. We're just trying to eliminate the inevitable of, of people complaining.
Well, I don't know that it's gonna be inevitable. On any reassessment, you're gonna have people that disagree with the ruling.
We're doing all that we can.
But right, I think we can do, we can go a long way to avoid what we went through last time by having this committee upfront. Um, you know, that is, that is validating the work, that is holding the assessor accountable, um, you know, in independently of, of our office and the commissioner's office. Uh, and then, you know, when, when that work is complete, we can bring in, you know, a board of equalization, which would, again, have equally, uh, expert people on it, but people who are coming in and, and looking at it with, again, completely fresh eyes and not having an established relationship with the assessor or the commissioner or our office or anything. Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, that's how I felt about it. So.
I, I agree with, uh, going back to Ed saying, what do we do then? I, I gotta, I do understand what he's saying. If we don't have the people to fill the position, how do I know? Do I go out?
Well, right, the, the.
And we want this fairly quick.
Right. Uh, so this, I mean, this might be a good opportunity now to take those people who had been on the BOE prior and ask them if they were interested in this type of committee because those people are already trained. They have already seen what can go wrong. A good opportunity if they wanna step in and maybe try to help this one go right. And then we work to recruit people for the BOE on the back, on the back end. As this process moves forward, we can, you know, utilize contacts, obviously, in this sense, since you're looking for somebody who's got a strong financial background, looking for accountants, looking for real estate professionals, appraisal professionals. Um, you know, and there, there's plenty out there and, you know, as we move through this process and continue to educate people, we'll probably find some people who are interested in taking part. I think, you know, I, the, the two BOEs that, that I've made nominations.
Plenty of people are talking, man, they're taking on that to do it.
Well, right, it's, it's a, it's kind of a thankless and often a right for direct criticism and conflict kind of position. So, uh, I've had plenty of people turn me down over the years, but, um, that's just, that's gonna be my strategy. You know, I, I've got, uh, you know, Reverend Riley, who I had appointed to the BOE, who's, who stayed engaged. I think he would be good for this committee, so I plan to ask him if he wants to serve on this. And if he does, I would nominate him to serve on this committee. And then, uh, we can work over the next year to try to, uh, recruit somebody to serve on the BOE.
So really, tonight, we just need to get this hammer down.
We just need to get this resolution presented, then we can start recruiting.
And then we'll start recruiting and provide those names if they accept to stay.
Right. And then we would appoint each person by resolution.
I understand that, but I mean, so that we have the list.
Right, right. We'll post it just like any other committee on the website.
So we're going to reach out or we're gonna take applicants?
Well, we'll, we'll have it out there. So the county will be taking applicants. I would encourage each of you to, you know, either reach out to your, your directly former BOE member or another contact that has the qualifications, try to get them interested in serving.
Modify the committee form we have now.
You mean just modify these up?
No, no, they can.
Yeah, application. Oh, yes. So it's not really, yeah, we can come up with a modified advisory committee application, right? Yeah, anybody that you guys can find can send in for it. Post it. Yes, this is an opportunity, just like when we were doing the BOE, to, to reach out your contacts in these industries and find qualified people who are willing to serve. So same for everybody out there who's listening in, if you know, qualified professional. Right. Um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take all comers and then we will, we will appoint the people who we judge to be the most qualified to handle this.
With repeating that, we need it probably.
Right, and we want to impanel this, I think, fairly quickly within the next, you know, probably within the next. Right, and we want to impanel this, I think, fairly quickly, within the next, you know, probably by the end of the year. I think that's what we're, we're aiming for here, but, uh-
Definitely.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to commend Mr. Hubbard for putting together some of the basic concepts and pulling this along for us.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, so we've got Resolution twenty-one dash seven-seven R, in which we are going to modify line sixteen to strike one member of the governing body continuing on in line seventeen of the county, striking three citizens, replacing that with five citizens of the county of proven ability appointed by the governing body. Uh, we will add in then a, a, I suppose, a comma for one from each of the five election districts. And continuing on unchanged from there.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept Resolution twenty-one dash seventy-seven.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Branch. Hi.
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 Hi. Very good. Except Department of Finance update, Ms. Journalin, since evening.
Good to be here.
Good evening.
County Finance has been very busy with, with implementation of new software for the financial soft, software, year-end finalization and preparing for the audit. Our auditors are, you know, onsite this week. They arrived today and they should be here until the end of the week. Um, they will be working with county administration, um, and DSS through the rest of this week, and they will be working with schools on, in a different period of time. Um, County Finance has been working on the bank reconciliation for county operating bank accounts since October seventh. Per auditors, in a perfect world, bank reconciliations would be prepared by the treasurer and reviewed each month by county and school finance. We feel we must make the board aware that the auditors have notified us that a material weakness over financial reporting due to the fact that bank accounts were not reconciled during the year will be reported on the CAFER for 2021. County Finance has been working on the county's operating account only. All other bank accounts remain with the treasurer for year-end reconciliation. The scope of work concluded months of October 2020 through June 2021. Simply put, the process is comparing what posted to the financial software versus actual at the bank. Our process included identifying unclear checks, comparing the daily work posted by the treasurer in the financial software to daily deposits at the bank, posting of interest and credit card fees, posting of wires received at the bank that had not been posted, identifying treasurer's manual checks written that have cleared the bank, identifying customer payments that have been returned or charged backs that have not posted to the financial software. We have completed the above and are in the process of compiling all information together to list reconciling items. Per the auditor, if bank accounts are not reconciled at June thirtieth, 2021 for the audit, they may have to issue, issue a disclaimer of opinion on the financial statements. This is a serious issue, but we seem to be in a relatively good place with county operating account, considering where we were two weeks ago. Are there any questions?
The reconciliation wasn't, uh, complete by June the thirtieth. We are, I guess, we in some form of violation?
Not a, there's not a violation. Um, we have to submit a CAFER. And to get a CAFER, we have to have financial statements. So it kind of all goes together. Without financial statements, there is no the CAFER. And that's the kind of what, uh, Ann Wall has, has said about the disclaimer.
It, it affects our audit.
Yes, because at, at the end of the day, the cash is kind of, cash is king. It, it, what's at the bank is confirming, yes, that's what we paid in our APs. It is confirming, yes, that's what we've received in revenues. It's how we find our issues when things aren't processed correctly too. So it's a good checks and balances.
Are there any other issues on the audit that you're concerned about?
No, not, um, the implementation of the software. We're pretty confident that what we've done is, um, Finance has, uh, validated that the information that's in the new software is in line with what was in our old software. Um, it, we went with the new software in November, starting paying bills for the county. But we didn't go with the new software for recording revenues until this fiscal year. But we've been running the parallel systems and making sure that their, the general ledger is staying intact between the two.
Um, that's system implementation. We knew it would be-
Yep.
Uh, painful.
Pleasant after a couple more years.
All right, so, so they say, until we switch again, right?
That's right.
Um, so where, where are we with that right now? Are we, are we, uh?
We're in a pretty good, um, we actually have, Edmunds is going to actually give us a week where we can actually bring all the departments together and have time to discuss certain issues that they're having or if they've got some concerns that they would like to see the system do something different. They're actually allotting time to just spend directly with each department.
Their responsiveness overall to, um, our outreach, has that improved since the last time we talked? And that there have been some complaints from others about a kind of a lack of response of the commissioner specifically?
Yeah, the commissioner, I do know that with, she, we were implementing, you know, the financial software for our financing, but then also a new software for the assessment, which was Vision.
Right.
So that was definitely a perfect storm, I would say. Um, I do feel like at one point Edmunds did not have someone that was very responsive to Ms. Funkhauser. I think that has been addressed. Um, I do feel like the help desk is our best source with Edmunds because we are all coming at them in, in different directions. I know planning and building can say nothing but good things about, you know, if I put in a help desk ticket, I get my response, I get fixes. If, with the implementation, um, it's, it's hard for them to understand what they, so with planning and building, they would call them and say, this is how it used to work in Bright. But I need that to kind of work the same way. But as long as they could have that conversation with them and explain, this is what I need to get to at the end of the day. It, you know, they had to kind of think outside the box. It wasn't just, yeah, I pressed this, this and this, and, and Bright, can I do the same thing in Edmunds? No, you have to kind of explain what were you, what, what was your end goal there? And once you can do that, they're, they're very, um, our, our systems are all different. It doesn't matter, Essex County has Edmunds, but ours is operating different than Essex, so we're all different.
And they had problems.
Yes, and they did, yeah.
Are issues collected and, uh, so that there's a history of what, what was input and what, what the solution was? So that when things change inevitably again, that there's a, you can go back and, and look. Is someone capturing that?
Yeah, with our department, what we do is we have a shared file where we, we input the date that we created a help desk ticket, what the problem was, the date that they've responded, what was the solution. I, I agree, um, because that's what we felt like we were kind of asking the same questions of them. So we kind of go there first and then decide, okay, where do we go? Do, do we have the answer already within our own department?
Is, all right, that would be shared with other departments that maybe could learn from?
Uh, well, what we do in finance is not going to be the same for every other department, so.
How, how far down the road before they have this meeting in Detroit?
Benjamin, do you know when that is? Is that like in the next couple of weeks, I think? Yeah.
I think that we have, we do, it's coming, actually. That's all right.
Yes, I was just wondering, like I said, you're having good luck with your help desk tickets, but we've heard that other departments aren't. I mean, you're saying maybe a lag, you know, response down. Others are telling us just plain out, not responding. That's a little way different than slow response. So you haven't ever had any problems with no response?
No, it might be twenty-four hours before we do get a response, but yeah.
You know, they, some departments are getting no response. I'm hoping that that's been fixed. Maybe it has.
Yeah, I do know Travis Wolf, the project manager, has been trying to make sure that, you know, the liaison between everyone gathering everything and then talking to Edmunds as, on a one-on-one. Um, maybe every two weeks gets on the phone with someone from Edmunds.
It's certainly improved, um, but Finance has also had it implemented for a much longer period of time. So they've already worked through a lot of the kinks, whereas the commissioner and the treasurer had it for a much shorter amount of time and are having a lot more help desk tickets they have to put in. So their response has been a little more, uh, up and down.
And it was predicted, uh, the previous commissioner revenue and the previous treasurer, that it would be issues. It was pretty much a predictable train wreck.
Yeah.
Uh, and I want to make one more point before anybody takes a ball and runs with it. When Harry left, when Harry Witt left, the accounts were reconciled, correct?
Yes, they were. I, I, actually, that's how what I've done is pulled his reconciliation and his work notes and have been able to then start, you know, October first, from what he had left us with.
And this is, this is just only to, to clarify it, so nobody tries to take that ball and run with it anymore?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Except Treasurer's Office update, Ms. Bancroft.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you all tonight. Thank you. Okay, so, um, first I will, uh, yes, reiterate that auditors are in the process of auditing the records. Um, I feel like some good positive feedback so far. Uh, and it doesn't seem to be too terribly concerned over the process that's going on right now. As, um, Finance has been tasked with reconciling the October through June. Um, my office has reconciled, um, the entire school's bank records. Um, we are currently working on July, August, September for them as well, because we did complete the whole, um, year from last year. Uh, we are also working on July, August, September, and October for the current year of just the operating account, because the other department is working on the others. So we are listing items, we're clearing them as we see if they've cleared, and we're just getting a head start on that, so that we make sure that we don't get behind like this ever again. So it's very important and, um, we take it very seriously. Um, excuse me, uh, real estate and personal property tax bills have not gone out yet. Um, there was a mapping issue between Edmunds and the billing company. And I just learned today that the programmers at, um, BMS are working on the new format. It is a different format than what's been used in the past, because Bright had a different mapping format. So they are having their programmers to match with, with, um, what Edmunds has. So that's going to take them a couple more days, is what they've told me today, and hopefully to have those by the end of the week. Um, I did go ahead and send, um, the mortgage lenders a file that it did take me quite a few weeks to get to match with what they needed. They do have those and they are getting the bills prepared to, um, pay. So I feel good about that. Um, let's see. Um, I did file, um, um, let me just go back. This 2018 delinquent real estate taxes will be turned over soon, because I will have them three years past due. And as, um, you all may know, that we can collect or send those to collections once they become three years past due. So as of December sixth this year, I will be turning those over to the taxing, um, authority folks. Um, they are doing a very good job on, um, collecting funds. They have, to date, since the money was turned over last December, collected four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, so that's a pretty good collection effort, I think. We do have, uh, currently, I received eighty-three additional parcels that will be advertised in the Country Courier tomorrow, oh, sorry, Wednesday. Um, so you will see that. You will probably recognize some people on there. Um, that's in addition to the fifty-seven that I had, um, at, um, collected upon and advertised in May. So I am working diligently on getting these properties, uh, accelerated to the tax sale. Um, I did file seventy-seven warrants, uh, warranting debts last week. Um, most of those were the 2016s. If I don't get those in before the end of this year, then I lose the capability to collect on those. So it's very imperative that I have, um, get those in. Um, so that will extend those to twelve thirty-one of 2026 to collect on. So that gives me a little bit more time to do that. Um, I think that's about it. Do you all have any questions for me?
I'll start. I was just wondering, since you had a, they said they were delinquent with getting the bills out, are we going to have an extension for them to pay or were they only, not really supposed to go out yet?
We have by law fifteen days to get those out, um, fifteen days prior to the due date. So there's no really concern on the real estate taxes. And as you all know, the new due date for personal property taxes is January fifteenth.
So it's still got enough time.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That was good, thanks.
Nothing else?
I'm seeing you coming into the court, keep clear of work.
Yeah, I did have an opportunity to speak with Harry Witt a few weeks ago, and actually, that was a very nice conversation. And, um, I felt good about the conversation that I had with him. I voiced some of my concerns, some of the same concerns that he'd had when he was, um, in the position. And so, uh, I felt really good after talking with him. Yeah.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Barr.
Do you foresee any major possible gotchas that you're tracking? That maybe not in your purview to, to affect?
My only concerns are, are with Edmunds. Um, I reached out to Penny, who's the treasurer of Essex County, um, prior to us having Edmunds, and she said it was a nightmare for them. And I thought, oh, that really can't be that for us. It's, it really just couldn't, because they perfected it, you know, since they've done a few more, but a nightmare is the word. And, um, while they did do a check on the, um, balances that came over, you know, we checked to see, okay, you've got this much that's owed on this, this much owed on this. Here's the number of these properties that you have, here's this. That all proved well, but in going further into Edmunds, for instance, if somebody owed us twenty-seven thousand dollars and now all of a sudden they have a credit, and I don't know how that happened, and I can't get Edmunds to answer me. So I have begged and begged and pleaded. I'm copying Travis Wolf, I'm copying Steve on that. I do not know how to get those folks to answer me. Travis really is trying his very best to get them to answer. Um, we have had a nightmare in getting Edmunds to answer us. It could be weeks before we find an answer. Um, the dog kennels, we couldn't even process dog kennels until a couple of weeks ago. You know, people want to come and buy kennel license. We didn't have the capability to do that until just a couple of weeks ago. So that's been, you know, we went live in July, and so October, we could finally process dog kennels. So, yeah, so there are some things that I really do need some explanations on, and I, I trust they'll be able to do that.
You ready?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. Marie Wilson was also thrown under the bus during this process. She physically asked for help, was refused help.
I understand.
Uh, it's, but anyway, like I said, it was a predictable train wreck. And we are where we are.
Yeah. It's a lot more than I ever thought it would be, um, but I'm determined.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But you're not going back, you're going forward.
Oh, we're absolutely going forward.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. I'm very serious about where this treasurer's office needs to be. I'm very serious about people need to pay their taxes. I, I had a gentleman come in who you will see in the paper on Wednesday, that tried to convince me to work with him, and I told him absolutely not. He needs to pay me the money that he owes me. And, um, before he left, he told me I was a hard ass, and I said, thank you.
So, um, on, on this, the business of moving forward and getting this office where we envision it being, uh, Stuart brings up, you know, help and, and, and resources. And, you know, I, I am concerned about the reconciliation issue and, and how we got to that point. So, um, you know, you mentioned a plan that you had to, to put that in place. Is, is it a question of, though, of, you know, I know you've chosen to work like without a deputy, for instance. Um, you know, is it, is it a question of, of resources, do you?
It's the process that was in place prior was, um, it could have been a better process. So going forward, it is going to be a better process. I am going to involve my deputies more in that process. They were not involved in it, um, whereas they should have been. Um, for instance, the daily work that gets, that they do, you know, that needs to get noted on the day that it's done, not much later and by someone else. You know, they're the ones who are directly doing it. So let's go ahead and get that in the Excel spreadsheet today. And so that's going to really help things. And so that's going to really help things a lot. I'm watching the bank account every day to see, like for instance, now I can scan the checks that we get. I sit there at my desk and I scan every single check that comes into my office. I can scan it and I can see it the very next day and it matches with what, you know, we said that the girls processed. My cash deposits, they all, I only deposit cash, nothing else. So I can reconcile my cash deposits a lot easier than it being all mixed in. It's just being able to see things in premise bank and now that I'm on top of it from the get-go. Now, when you're behind the eight ball, it's a lot harder to catch up on that. When I'm trying to learn the Treasurer's Office, I was trying to learn the Bright system. Personal property and real estate, real estate taxes went out in May. I had to try to learn how do I get those processed in Bright? How do I get reports processed in Bright before it goes away? I have two deputies and no longer a Deputy Treasurer or a third person. So it's my two deputies and myself, you know, trying to learn. We didn't get any training on Edmunds. It's just, we're just figuring out as we go along. Now luckily for me, that stuff comes pretty easy to me. So I have been able to figure out a lot of things in Edmunds that say my deputies haven't been able to figure out and I'll go to them and help them and train them. You know, I need to be working on other things, but they need to be trained. If they have no one to train them, they're going to sit there all day and try to figure it out. So it's been, it's been a real challenge, a big challenge.
I'm sure. So do you think there would be any benefit though to bringing on a Deputy Treasurer? Could that help alleviate some of the pressure that's on these two areas between, you know, your deputies who are, you know, trying to figure this out and you have your own tasks too?
Yes, and Steve and I have discussed that. You know, my deputies are wonderful, just absolutely amazing and I don't know what I would do without them. Are they ready for the Deputy Treasurer position? Well, no, one actually doesn't live in the county, so that's really not an option. My other one, she's not there yet. I do anticipate one day she'll be Treasurer, but right now that's just not that. The challenge would be to find somebody who does have exactly the experience that you need in that area. I don't know where I'm going to find that. I mean, it's hard enough that you can't even get good part-time people or, I mean, just a lot of folks just don't want to necessarily work. So it's finding the person who is absolutely qualified. That's the challenge. But yes, I do think it would help.
Mr. Chair, may I ask? I'm thinking that you were still in the office, the Treasurer's Association provided a mentor?
Yes.
Is that a possibility to ask?
Not anymore because she, we have Edmunds and she's got Bright. So she knows Bright. She doesn't know a thing about Edmunds. She doesn't know how anything is processed in Edmunds.
Could the Treasurer's Association maybe appoint someone else who is familiar with Edmunds? Or could we maybe reach out?
I could inquire, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't want to see, you know, especially any weaknesses developed in our, especially in our auditing, you know, because we're leaving resources on the table. So I guess the last question that I have more of an ask, since we're going into audit right now, we're going into, you know, bills going out, collections starting. Would you mind making this for maybe the next six months, a monthly report?
Absolutely sure, yeah.
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 And then we can, you know, try to work, you know, through this board and your office, ways that we can all, you know, make this work as a team. We're all in the building, we've all got kind of the same outcome that we desire.
And I'm a very team-oriented person and if I can get that team effort from others, that would be just wonderful. And I appreciate that very much.
All right. Yes, one other thing, like Steve was saying, as Graham was saying, they have a list. Do you have a list too of the questions that you have proposed to Edmunds or not answered so you could?
Yes. Oh, yeah. And so when I don't get an answer in a timely fashion, I just send another one. And then we call them and then I send a copy to Steve and I send a copy to Travis. I just keep telling my girls, send them another one, send them another one.
Thanks.
I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, except maybe make note of that how many times it's the same issue.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be great.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
All right, moving into new business, Resolution 21-78 approving voting credentials for the 2021 Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I make a motion to Mr. Miskowski take that position?
I want to sit next to him.
Just what he always wants. Sorry.
It's not a whole lot to do here. If nominated, I shall accept and if elected, I will.
Well, that was easy.
Somebody was more reference.
We have motion and second?
We do indeed. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
It's just like showing a spelling error on that.
Oh, boy.
Two Ps and proving.
Thank you. All right, Resolution 21-80, forming a redistricting committee. Now you can take the microphone, Mr. Cass.
So it was recently brought to my attention that this is the year we need to redistrict. Right. It's done every 10 years. The census data has just recently come out. It's taken them a lot longer to get that to us, but now we've got it. In the past, the county has utilized a redistricting advisory committee to aid in this process. Basically, county staff would provide GIS data, work with maybe a consultant to pair census data with the GIS, but it would be this advisory committee that would actually do the line adjustments and propose a new districting map to the board. Is that what you would like to do this round?
My first question would be, how are you going to work with West Point?
How do you mean?
How are you going to change it?
Well, right, so, well, West Point's always been a bit of a special case. The history lesson on that, and you've been around long enough to remember this, is that, you know, it used to be split between two districts. And then there was a period of time in which they did their very best to hem it and adjust the West Point corporate limits, but there were still some people on West Point, I think specifically going down to Lake Magnolia Avenue who were still in the second district and who got to vote in school board elections at King William, which was problematic, obviously. And so during the last redistricting, they were able to finally get the numbers to work out to where West Point was its own district alone. No bleed over into the second district and no bleed over from the second district into the first. I guess the question is how that data lines up. Obviously, the populations have to be within a certain percentage of one another. You know, if there's an issue, perhaps you could expand the second district some. We shrink it depending on how population's looking, the fourth and the third. I haven't seen the data to know what the opportunities are. But I would imagine that we would educate any redistricting committee to understand the sensitivities that go with that, especially West Point having its own system.
With the voting.
That we would, we would want to, as much as is practical and legal, keep West Point its own, you know, the voter district within the town limits. But of course, we have the law to contend with when it comes to population. So I haven't seen what the town numbers are compared to the others.
If the West Point town line or district has to be moved, that's going to affect the school district also?
No, it won't affect where they go to school, but if the West Point district has to be compressed, you know, or expanded for any reason, you could end up with, I'm sorry, compacted for some reason. You could end up with an issue like you've had in the past where you have, you know, residents of the town of West Point able to vote in a school board election because of the way that the district is drawn.
So the preliminary numbers, I'm thinking the fourth district is at a very large.
Third and fourth district, I haven't looked at the numbers, but I know that in the county, the third and fourth district are where most of the growth is taking place.
Again, there's probably opportunity to shrink, there's probably opportunity to shrink the geographic areas of those districts, which would allow any expansion that would need to take place to accommodate those population differences to probably take place on that side of the line as opposed to on the West Point side of the line. But I haven't seen West Point's final numbers either to know. But that's, again, that's a problem that we've only been able to solve in the last 10 years. Prior to that, West Point literally was split down the middle and one side was the first district, other side was the second district, both of those districts ran all the way up 360. It used to be the case that there were two residents of the town of West Point that sat on this very board of supervisors at one time. So.
Long time ago.
It wasn't as long ago as you think.
But it did happen, you're right.
But it is. I mean, it's, so that's going to be a job for the committee to take up though. You know, but then it's also the board gets the final approval on what these lines look like. What we're talking about is a, you know, advisory committee that will crunch those numbers and give us districts that are equitable in population, comply with the law and, you know, we can decide if we need to alter that. You know, again, still remaining in compliance with the law, but any.
You have the numbers, West Point also.
I've got the census numbers for the county, which includes the town.
Anyways, we're kind of, we're kind of, we're crossing the bridge before we know that it's even there, right?
Mr. Chair? One thing that is important to know is because of the lateness of the census data, it's really put this poor board in a box for doing this in a timely fashion. The statute, it actually requires that you redistrict by the end of the year. And so for y'all to form a committee to advise you and to still accomplish it has to be accomplished by an ordinance, which has to be advertised. I mean, it's, it's a difficult thing. It's unfortunate. I mean, I was hoping, hoping that the General Assembly in their special session would address the issue and allow redistricting on into the next year, but they have not done that. So just thought that the board should be aware of the timeframe that y'all are facing.
Well, since they've already objected to their own district maps, they'll probably be in the same boat.
Well, they haven't helped at all because on the one hand, they'll say you can't have a split district with any state office district line, which they did in their earlier session in the year. And then of course, they've got this redistricting commission that can't seem to finish its job, so it's difficult.
Can you get close? So again, if they want to take us to court, we'll take them to court right with us.
There you go. I certainly think.
Or we'll just let a judge draw the lines and we won't have to put anybody on our committee.
I will tell you this, there are a lot of counties that will probably not be finishing their redistricting this year as required by statute. In my opinion, that deadline is mandatory but not jurisdictional.
What's that?
What's a penalty? Exactly my point. There is no penalty.
Right.
The fact is, somebody could in theory take you to court and get a court to order you to redistrict, which you would then do in 2022.
That's what it's going to have to be. So the resolution that we have is again, just like the early resolution, it's just establishing the committee. We're not impaneling it tonight. We do need to recruit members with an eye to, just like the advisory committee, this needs to be done rather rapidly. You know, just out of, again, good faith attempt to comply with the code as it exists, having been otherwise handicapped by the inability of the federal government to do its duty in releasing the census data in a timely fashion. So basically, I think the resolution just pretty much says that we will form an advisory committee to make recommendations to the board and, you know, compliance with state code section that deals with redistricting. Their term will expire when the district map is.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Yep. So if there's no objection to that, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 21-80.
Didn't get a copy of anything.
No, we didn't, I didn't get a, I didn't get a resolution.
It was distributed via email, I believe, ahead of.
Oh, yeah. I can't check email. We talked about this before, the last time.
So how does it read?
All right, you got a paper copy because it's not at our place. I was just relying on the one.
I was actually relying on the one.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to.
When was it sent? I worked with it.
Right here, I'll take it.
I just saw the one that dated. We got change of school meeting tomorrow.
All right. Resolution 21-80, establishing a King William County Redistricting Advisory Committee, whereas under Virginia Code Section 15.2-1411, appointment of advisory boards, committees, and commissions, compensation and reimbursement of expenses. The governing body of any locality may appoint such advisory boards, committees, and commissions as it deemed is necessary to advise the governing body with regard to any matter of concern to the locality. Members shall be appointed to serve at the pleasure of the governing body and whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to create an advisory committee, the Redistricting Advisory Committee, to advise the board regarding the required redistricting of the year 2021. And whereas the committee shall review current census data and recommend to the board to redraw an election district map. Whereas the reapportionment of the election districts shall be pursuant to Virginia Code Section 24.2-34.304.1 at all. And whereas the committee's members' terms shall end at the adoption of the new election district map. Now therefore be it resolved by the King William County Board of Supervisors since 25th day of October 2021, a redistricting advisory committee is created to act as an advisory committee to the King William County Board of Supervisors.
Is it any recommendation for the number? Are we going to try to do that by district? Does that need to be in that or is that open for discussion later?
We have in the past. This is the most formal process, I think, we've been able to, well, there is no formal process. We're establishing this committee by resolution because it's never been done before. It's always just been done by motion. Somebody's been appointed to the redistricting committee. So Mr. Hudgens and I thought that it would be good to have this established by resolution and then to appoint members by resolution, which is also not been done. All he'd been able to find was letters sent to the appointed members. Again, if somebody wants to add in one member from each election district, I don't think that'd be a problem.
I think that'd be good. I think we're going to be able to do, especially with this, pretty important by district.
All right, so committee's terms and conditions, committee on line 18 will say, committee shall consist of five members, one from each of the five election districts. Granted, they can always advise us that they want to create a new election.
Mr. Chair, I make motion if we approve 21-80R.
Seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, now we are on to public hearings. One opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on these matters. What we'll start with is a presentation from Ms. Graham on each of the zoning issues before us. We will then open the floor for the public hearing. After the public hearing, we do allot time for the applicant if there's anything they wish to add or respond to from the public hearing. So we'll start with Ms. Graham and we're going to start with Resolution 21-79 approving conditional use permit 09-21.
So tonight we have before you a request for conditional use permit from Mr. and Mrs. James Prince. Their property is located at 88 Mill Road. They're wanting to construct an accessory dwelling on their property that's going to be about 1,500 square feet. This would be for their son and his family. Their sons are in the military and actually got home today. They have property that's 19.1 acres, but for financial reasons, they don't want to break it off at this time that they're going to, they want to construct it all on one property. They currently live on the property towards the rear. If you can see where that a little bunch of trees are in the front.
Yes.
They want to build this house on the backside of it. And it's trees all the way around, so it's not really visible to anybody. And you can see that everything in that area is then R1. This is a plaque that they showed. It would be required to get a new plaque if approved.
Is the red X the existing?
No.
Or is that the proposed?
That's the proposed, but it's kind of misleading a little bit. The pictures will kind of show it a little bit better.
Okay.
Next, okay. So this is the area that they're wanting to build it. And if you look towards the back, you can see their house currently. Okay. Just the drive going in. Another picture of the area where they're proposing to build it. Um, and this is the driveway to the existing house. Okay. Um, this did go to the planning commission at their October 5th meeting. And they voted five to zero to recommend approval to the board. And Mr. and Mrs. Prince are here tonight if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Graham before I open the public hearing?
Um, Ms. Graham, were there any comments from any of the adjacent landowners?
I had a, a gentleman call and inquire about what was going on, but nobody in opposition.
Anybody else? All right. We'll go ahead and do the public hearing. So again, uh, public hearing on this matter and this matter only, one opportunity of three minutes per individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. We do ask that you state your name and the district in which you reside before you begin speaking. If you're representing a group, please state so before you begin. We'll open the public hearing on CUP, uh, 09 dash 21 now. Is there anyone online that has raised their hand?
You're afraid of that right now?
That they will be on it shortly. Um, all right. If there's no one that wishes to speak, go on once, go on twice, I'll close the public hearing on the matter. All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants?
If no one has a question, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve Resolution 21 79.
Very good. Seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. I pass this. All right. Okay. And we're very happy their son is. It's great.
Is he? Is he back or is he discharged?
Wonderful. Well, we're glad to have him.
It was good to see y'all. Elaine, get him out of here before he misbehaves.
All right. And you're back up for ordinance, uh, 10 dash 21, a rezoning request, uh, Z dash O1 dash 21.
Okay. So we also have the rezoning case for Forest Pro. They are proposing to, um, rezone approximately six acres um, of a parcel that consists of 37.23 acres. It, um, currently is zone AC. They'd like to have it zoned to B2. And it's located just about to the corner of Venture and King William. Um, the purpose of dividing this and rezoning is to operate an office, um, and farm machinery, retail and repair shop. This went to the board of, um, for the planning commission, October 5th. Um, it, they voted three to two to recommend approval. On this, we've had, um, several inquiries. Um, we've had people for and people against the project. I think the, the main concern for people was the noise and traffic, possible traffic issues. And I do believe they are here as well, but I do have a couple of pictures that I will show you first.
Oh, what are the hours of the business?
Um, I don't have any hours. I guess we can ask them when we have them come up in just a moment. And this is the, the whole parcel, um, in question. Okay.
So it does go all the way to venture?
Yep.
Okay. I, I thought you said.
Well, it, it, there is, there is a little
Yeah, that's.
Right at the corner. So it doesn't actually touch that corner.
I got it.
Yeah, but it's closed. Okay. Um, and this is the zoning and you can see that everything in the white is AC and in the yellow is R1. Um, and this is where they're planning to do the six acre division. So they don't go all the way to the corner with it, um, but it's pretty close. There's some pictures of the property and the surrounding properties. This is, um, a lot of you may know where the gravel pull off is. You know, that a lot of the truckers use at the park.
Chair, is that part of the parcel in question or is that owned by V dot 7?
Um, I believe it's the way it shows it's owned by the, um, the property owner.
Oh, thank you.
And the people objecting live on venture?
Okay. We, we've had a couple of other people as well. They should have copies in your.
Yeah, I saw that. I was really looking at photographs where the houses were in relation to the lot.
Most of your houses are going to be on Venture. And I, uh, go ahead.
And what was their concern?
I'm sorry?
What was their concern?
The noise and traffic.
I'd just like to point something out. That, that gravel holding area, that's going to pretty much, this six acres is pretty much going to make that disappear.
Mm-hmm.
You have traffic trails that park there. Uh, that gravel holding area, when they are working on roads, which is pretty often, it is a piece of equipment there that makes noise also.
Okay. All right. And that's kind of looking from that area that we were just talking about.
We should have asked our V dot rep where, where they're gonna move that to the, that, that place has been there since I've been aligned in King William. I can't imagine they can't do without it.
Those are the houses on Venture. Uh, and that's the corner there.
Ms. Graham, can you describe the impact of these three conditions that have to be met? In the, in the resolution, there's three conditions that the company must meet. What, what's the impact if any of those are not met?
Oh, it's in a transportation corridor overlay district. So any use in the transportation corridor overlay district, they're going to have to meet all of the TCO requirements. Um, they're going to have to provide buffers. They're going to have to provide landscaping. There, they cannot use like metal siding. They can't have a flat roof. Uh, any outside storage would have to be screened from the, the public by appropriate screening. Um, other things such as, uh, loading dock, the type of thing has to be to the rear. So there's a few, um, the signage, they're limited on their signage, that type of thing.
The, yeah, I know we're probably not to that part, but my question, do you know where their entrance will be, which side?
I do not. Well, it's, it's probably going to have to come off of 30.
That's what I was.
Because they're not going all the way to Venture. So they're going to have to come, but I don't know which side looking at 30, it's going to be, they might be able to address that. Um, then they've got existing entrance to King William Road is an unpaved entrance. Um, any change using this site is going to require approval by V dot. So they, they will probably require a traffic study, um, determine what type of entrance is going to be required by V dot.
I don't think they have enough on Venture to exit there.
They, they don't go all the way to Venture. So.
Oh, okay. It looked like it did right there and then almost to the corner.
It's almost, but it doesn't go all the way. And the six acres that they're wanting to cut out, um, it's more going toward.
So coming out there.
Yeah.
You said they'd have to do a, a V dot study on that.
V dot will more than likely require a traffic study to determine if it's going to be a low volume or a high volume entrance. Um, but that will be, um, up to the applicant to do.
Okay.
So. My, my page did not, um, get attached. I don't know what number three reads. And number three, this is a traffic study and recommended roadway. Improvements are the responsibility of applicant future owners. And any such improvement will be based on the use and development of the proposed, um, use at future times. So it, it will be up to V dot to I don't know what kind of entrance and if there's going to be a need for turn lane and that type of thing.
Okay. Is there any other questions from Ms. Graham? Are we not all open to the public hearing? And we can go from there. All right.
And we do have the applicants here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Of course. Yeah. We typically allot enough time after the public hearing is complete. So we'll go ahead then and we'll open the public hearing on this matter, which is ordinance 10 dash 21, which would approve zoning request Z dash O1 dash 21. Again, one opportunity of three minutes per an individual, five minutes per group. Please state your name and your district before you begin speaking. And if you're representing a group, please say so before you begin to speak. We'll open the public hearing on this matter now. Anyone online? All right. Last call, public hearing, rezoning. You are absolutely going to have an opportunity. Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, there may no one wishing to speak. We will close the public hearing on this matter. Uh, the applicant is welcome to come forward at this time and, uh, speak briefly, answer any questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, I will be brief. I just wanted to introduce myself quickly. My name is Pete Karamanis. I'm here on behalf of Forest Pro. And, uh, some of our management is, is here as well to make sure we can answer any questions that you might have. Just very quickly, wanted to mention, um, as Ms. Graham did, that at the planning commission, the two things that were brought up were, uh, potential noise concerns, which I think Mr. Garber made an excellent point. I think actually what we're proposing is going to be less noisy than some of the things that are happening there now with trucks parking in the, uh, in that lot. Um, certainly what we're proposing is not a noise generating, um, use. Uh, as we said, it's a, it's a retail and, and service shop, but it's not going to be in the manufacturing out, outdoor type of, of work that's going to be creating noise. To answer the question that was asked about hours, the anticipated hours would be from about eight to five on weekdays. So, um, no concerns obviously then with, you know, noise after hours or, or, um, bothering anybody on, on weekends. Um, the, the main thing that was brought up at the planning commission hearing were concerns over traffic, although the concerns that were brought up all seemed to be concerns about the existing situation there, the, the existing road and intersection. There didn't seem to be any concern specific to this, uh, this proposal. Um, and by that I mean, you know, that, that this proposed use was going to create, you know, some level of traffic that was really going to cause a problem. Um, as we mentioned at the planning commission hearing, this is, it's a very low traffic use, uh, that's being proposed. Um, single digits of cars per day and potentially per week, depending on, you know, how many, how many customers come in. But this is, it's, it's not, you know, equipment that every day people are using. This is forestry equipment that, you know, in some cases is hundreds of thousands of dollars apiece. Um, so, um, you know, it is not something that's just going to be frequent. It's like a Lowe's where, you know, the public's going to be going and grabbing things every day. Um, so, um, you know, from a traffic perspective, we really don't think, you know, while there may be legitimate concerns about that area and then that needs to be looked at by V dot or whoever. Um, this proposal is not going to create enough traffic to, to make a noticeable impact on that, uh, whatsoever. Um, so just a couple of other things I want to note real quickly about this. Um, as was noted in the staff report, you know, the comprehensive plan does state, um, that, uh, the county is looking to attract businesses of this type, retail and service businesses. Um, we think this would be obviously a great business to be here. That's why Forest Pro is proposing this. Um, not only to serve an industry that, um, that is important in this area. Um, but also obviously, uh, you know, we do expect that this business would, would generate a substantial amount of tax revenue for the county. Um, and, uh, you know, again, in a place that would be very low impact or in a way, uh, with a use that would be very low impact otherwise. So, um, you know, with all of that in mind, uh, we would respectfully ask that, that this be approved. Um, as relates again to the traffic and the traffic study part, I mean, our understanding is that the V dot review of this will happen at the site plan stage, not at this rezoning stage. So, um, if it is approved tonight, obviously we'll be back at some point, um, with a site plan application that will then be reviewed by V dot to determine exactly where and what type of entrance there will be and those, those types of details. Uh, obviously we're fully aware of that and we'll, uh, design the site in a way that V dot finds acceptable. And obviously that is, um, you know, that is, that is, has as little impact as, as possible. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
Yes, sir. If things flow as expected, when would you anticipate moving from your current location?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
If things flow as expected.
Yes.
About what timeframe would you, would you expect to move from where you are now to the new location?
Um, I don't know if Joel has a specific timeframe in mind, but, um, you know, there will be at least some months that, uh, we'll go, if we get approved tonight, then we'll be closing on the property. We need to obviously get the approval of the subdivision.
You're asking him to predict how quickly V dot can roll.
Yeah. So the subdivision, um, but has, we, we need that approval as well as this approval. And then, then the six acres can be officially obviously subdivided and closed on. Um, and at that point we would be applying, um, for the site plan. Um, so it is not, it's not a long-term vision. It would be sort of as, as efficiently as we can get at that.
The, for one thing, the people that are concerned about traffic, uh, how many units estimated would you be selling per year in King William County? Right. And again, the cost of, of these units? And and when the people come, they're ready to die probably. It's not a lot of flow. It's, it's not a used car lot. And after they purchase this equipment, for the most part, it's delivered on site, correct? And most of your service work is also on site, wherever the forest operation may be, right?
Not a question that would have any bearing on my decision to approve or deny, but if approved, how many jobs would you anticipate this would, uh, add to the local account? Jobs, employees?
No, no real news, employees, correct? No real new employees?
No new employees. Uh, I guess.
If they don't have a maintenance facility they're at now, they're going to, that's why they want days here so they can bring some. And I wanted to bring up, I thought you all own the property. So you actually don't own the property now. You're just going to buy the six acres from the current.
Right. Forest Pro right now is the contract purchaser of these six acres that we're seeking to rezone. And that purchase is contingent on getting the rezoning.
Right. And I know I was on the planning commission when we talked about it, but the thing we did bring up was about that truck, truck gravel lane with the V dot. You would buy it and that does include that area. So that would be taken off. And that would be your land and then your entrance would be there and you would have to meet the requirements of buffers and vegetation and all that stuff.
That's right. Yes.
And then I wanted to point out since, as you know, we were at the planning commission, public hearing, that the people were, a lot of them were complaining from those houses. But as you said, your property doesn't really touch it at all if you're cutting it off before that end. But it is a cornfield. So, and I know you have to meet certain vegetation requirements. Would you put more maybe between back, on that back area to maybe try to buffer more for those houses?
Would certainly do whatever is required at the, at the site plan phase. I mean, we want to be good neighbors.
Right. That's what I thought. And, and like I said, that's a, a main. Right, that's what I thought, and like I said, that's a, a main area with the, the braking. And like I said, people are bringing up issues about noise, that's not going to stop because that's where fifty-five drops to forty-five. The air brakes make a lot of noise, that's not you all.
Right.
That's the people that are already there, so.
Right, like, as I said, I think that this use will probably be quieter than what's currently going on.
Exactly.
From what I understood, it almost sounded like they were more concerned about what they already have and
Yes.
Not so much what you would add.
Correct, that's, that's my understanding of.
That's what I heard, that's what most of the complaints were, like I said, it wasn't for them, it was for the area.
Well, I'm interested, Ms. Graham, while you're here, have you been in contact with any of the people who voiced opposition at the meeting prior? I'm, I'm a bit surprised that we didn't have any tonight, you had three at the planning commission meeting.
We've had some people, they kept the planning commission meeting, and then I've had two people come in my office, who were in states.
Okay, but those three who spoke in opposition, have they indicated that they no longer have that opposition or? Okay, I'm just curious as a learner. Okay.
I'm ready to make a move.
All right.
Move that we accept ordinance ten dash twenty-one.
Mr. Graham had already called it. All right, any discussion? Ms. Graham.
Hi.
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 Hi. I think we're done. All right, administrative matters, anything you want to highlight?
The VIPSA community have a partner information, I might put this on it, that's in the packet in the back. I might put this on the work session. You probably already know that the VIPSA agreement is coming due for renewal in the next year, so they've put together a nice little slideshow about what they do. Any questions you have, kind of like what was discussed a couple of months ago, a few months ago, about what we might want to put into that agreement? Any, any concerns, anything that we might want to change besides just making sure that they do what they need to be doing at the job sites?
The one question that I have, is it any competition, anybody else that may bid on that or? It's, it's due in twenty twenty-three, correct?
Uh, yes.
Is it anybody else out there?
I'm aware of.
Is everybody happy with them or?
Not a hundred percent.
I think the only person in, in the vicinity is waste management.
We talked about explaining the hours until we get more hours, we cut it back.
Yeah, I don't, that's a whole lot of. It's more about what do we want to do with hours and how much do we want to pay for it.
Okay. All right, I don't think we have any calls for a closed session tonight, do we? Not that I'm aware of. Sorry. It's always, it's always on the agenda, I don't think we had anything to go in about. Just clarifying, because I was. No, no, that's, that's, that's unresolved at this, at this point, we've got another compensation waiting on that. All right, well then we'll go ahead and do board comments, I don't know who I started with last week, so we'll go with Bill.
You're always doing that.
I spun the pen this time, so it's.
Yeah, I saw that. I don't have a whole lot, but Annas is open, Annas is open, Annas is open. Delicious pizza, it's all takeout and
How do you know?
Out front.
Yeah.
We're glad to see him come back. Those didn't know, both the brothers passed away from COVID, and this is the son of one of them that came back and knows him. But we're very proud that you're back in and glad that they, that they were able to come back. I think that's all that I have.
Thank you everyone for coming, it's a little bit smaller crowd than we had before. Sorry, as Mr. Friskowski said about the outburst of the Zoom meeting, they're crazy people, but it has been a, was a full moon this past Wednesday, so. Anything happens, thanks everybody for coming, Pete, still be safe out there, I know Virginia is going to six point five, as I looked, it's coming down, but still got to be careful out there, booster shots are available, if you haven't got your original, just get that, you need the other ones. Do whatever you can, but protect yourself, except if you don't protect yourself, can't protect anybody else, thanks everybody for coming.
Ms. Mora. I'd like to congratulate King William High School for winning their homecoming game over the weekend. Please go out and get your flu shots. It's going to be just as important probably as COVID boosters at this point. And I'd like to state my kudos for the animal shelter folks. We had recently took advantage of a neuter space situation with a female cat. Excellent, excellent work. She is healthy, bouncy around, and two beautiful little kittens that she produced before we spayed her, so. Anyway, kudos to the animal shelter, that's all I got.
Sure.
I'd like to thank Jane Campbell for that article about Mike Gault in the country area. None the family, they lifelong friends. He was the definition of a hardworking man. And I got a, a real good laugh out of it when I read it, because that, that was him, he, he enjoyed life. And also, I don't know whether any of y'all are aware, King William Tire is shutting the doors after fifteen years. I don't know that it's any, any plans in the immediate future there. I want to welcome Forest Pro, I think that's a good fit for this area. They will serve, it will be a regional type thing where they will serve local loggers. And that equipment is very expensive, and it is the type of business that we need in King William. And also, get out and vote, and thank everybody for coming.
I'll repeat.
I'll second, I'll second it.
I'm, I'm, I'm too much of a traditionalist, I have to go on election day. Plus, my, my aunts work my precinct, so if I didn't show up there with the girls. Right. As always, thanks everyone for coming. We got through a lot of, of stuff tonight, so thanks for sticking with us. Happy that we were able to approve this couple of zoning matters. Again, I think that'll be a good addition to the county with Forest Pro and then always happy when we can help a veteran come home. You know, I continue to be concerned about making sure that, that, you know, are we interfacing with constitutional officers, so we'll continue to work on that. But we'll save that for another time, happy Halloween, be safe, and we'll see you all back here in November. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, second it, no discussion, so Ms. Graham.